We're all quiet waiting for something.
Wait in front of the minute and a half.
Okay, ding us in or something.
That's true. I mean, labyrinthous.
We may not want to do that. That's a dangerous precedent.
It is.
That's high expectations.
Oh, yeah. And then you'll like show up right on time and you'll be late. Don't want that. Boy, he's on top of it today.
I am.
All right.
He's just gonna keep standing until he tells me because we're about to stand again.
I think that, I think that tape is rolling. I just hope he edits all of this to start.
Okay, it's five o'clock on Monday, September the 20th. Want to welcome everyone to the city council meeting today. We'll call this meeting to order, and if everyone would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Jody?
Here.
Harley?
Here.
Brad?
Here.
Rodney?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Don.
Okay, we do have a quorum today. Agenda item number four, entertain a motion then to approve today's agenda.
I understand that number 14 needs to be dropped from the agenda because we already talked about that yet, so move to approve the amended agenda with number 14 removed.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Across the mayor's desk, I have a number of items. First, I'd like to thank Kylie Scow, our videographer today. The Daughters of the American Revolution asked me to read this proclamation that pertains to Constitution Week, which we're in the middle of. It's September the 17th to the 23rd. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America. Whereas it is of great importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the constitution in order to effectively support, preserve, and defend it against all enemies. And whereas September 17th, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas Public Law Number 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Rick Murphy, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Algona in the state of Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guarding of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. It is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable, and its memorable anniversary. So again, yes, a very, certainly a very important document for us here in the United States and very happy to read that. I did get a thank you from the senior citizens, the active senior citizens of Algona. Each year, the city does donate $7,700 to them. This thank you does mention that they've seen a large increase in memberships this year and have had strong support from community businesses. They do offer both educational and entertaining programs for seniors living in the area, whether they're members or not. And a large portion of the $7,700 gift goes toward the Meals on Wheels. And we all know that, how important that is, that there are several seniors in our area that look forward to having that affordable hot meal delivered to their door each day. And then yesterday, I certainly want to thank Scott and Julie Seawick for that car show that was organized downtown Algona yesterday, held from 2 until 4. I believe there were about 150 vehicles that attended and a big crowd of individuals as well. So I heard a lot of positive comments about that. And he's talking about having one again, organizing one next year as well, so. And I just did want to mention that three days last week that Jacob, Barb, Rodney and I attended the Iowa League of Cities Conference, and that was held in Coralville. There were different breakout sessions on different topics. And also just kind of gave us a chance to network with our peer group too. So I thought it was very informative, very worthwhile, and I was very happy to be able to attend that. So any other, anything from the council today? Okay. Hearing none, then we'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, an update from the city administrator.
A few updates regarding the street projects. First one about bringing up Moore Street reconstruction and the Gregory Street closure. Unfortunately, it looks like that street's going to remain closed at least for the next few weeks of mid-October. What we're looking at, just do with the subcontractors and when the payers can get up here to begin that work. Beginning next week, or excuse me, beginning tomorrow, we will be marking off some spaces on Nebraska Street, on the corners of Hall and Jones, designating those as no parking areas just to make sure that there's enough room for anyone turning with, you know, might be hauling wagons or semis, provide enough buffer there. We've got our next construction meeting is next Tuesday. Right at the 28th right now, the contractors are looking at the week of the 27th to begin that paving work. For some reason now, we're not going to be hitting that timeline when we have our next meeting on the 28th. Will we look at, there's a, makes sense to look at a temporary reopening. This time, given that where we're at, we're looking at keeping it closed. Because once it begins paving, it will have to remain closed until the main line paving is done just from the safety construction standpoint. So we'll be reaching out to raise awareness on the continued detour. Like I said, marking up no parking zones to better accommodate some of that longer equipment. And then the contractors are very aware of the major inconvenience. This is a mid-grader. And we'll, our doors will just reopen as soon as we possibly can. We're just waiting for the subcontractor to be on site to start that work. And then I want to, the rest of my update, I want to have the medical come up. He's the onsite engineer from Boltzman, and just kind of provide an update on our other street projects. If you'll answer any questions on those or the Moore Street project, I'm not too mad.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess we can just start with Moore Street and Snap-on. As an update, as you know, the Wicks Construction subcontractor doing the paving is not in town yet. They finished up Main Street concrete work. We're looking to get that street open this weekend, but we are waiting for them to show up for Moore Street. The schedule that Rodney had and the schedule that Wicks had just isn't quite lining up perfectly. It's been, it's been ready to pave for three or four weeks now. So we're just kind of going to wait a moment on that. So the detour is lasting a little longer than originally anticipated. But Snap-on Drive is continuing work, almost done with all the sanitary sewer work. And then all that will remain is the water main and storm sewer out there. The mass grading, both ponds are done. And looking to get some seeding done out on the lock grade that was completed in the ponds that have been finished up. The horse underneath the highway are complete. Both, both the sand tearing and the water main crossing Highway 18 are done. Temporary traffic control is still set up. We need to do some sand filling on those casings, sewer casings. So the temporary traffic control, the lane closures on the four lane out there is going to be up until the sand fill is complete, just so they can have a way to do that and not take it down and set it back up again for, for that. Main Street, like I said, is going to be open hopefully at the end of this week. We're finishing up some dirt work that got rained on today and slowed that down. So just got traffic control to take down and new traffic signs to put in, basically. So once the new stop signs and street signs and traffic control, permanent traffic control are up, we'll take the signs closure down and open the street up for traffic. So hoping that happens this weekend. The Millen overlay job is continuing. They milled all of Moore Street today and Jones. So they're going to start paving again tomorrow. They're going to start up Booster, pave at Booster, Jones, and then more on Wednesday. Concrete crew got rained out today as well, but they're going to be working on finishing up stuff on Overmeyer and River View, and then working on Kennedy Williams and Lowell Street to finish out the project. So hoping by, they were thinking the end of this week they were going to be finished, but I'm thinking probably middle to end of next week now with getting rained out. So that job's moving along. We did pave Kennedy Street in front of Lucio Wallace on Saturday, so there was no disturbance to the school there. So that was nice to get that done. Got any other questions or concerns?
So all of the Millen overlay that are still on schedule to be finished by the end of September? End of this month?
Uh, no, they're, they're going to try and get all the concrete work done. All the removals, basically all the removals are complete. There's some very minor removals left. We're working on, down on the Overmeyer, River View, South Street. There's some valley gutters that we need to take out to replace through the intersections. So the intersections will be closed. We do have two of them complete. But with the county doing their overlay project south of Overmeyer on Hall Street, that county road, there's not really very good access to get back to that corner of town if we shut off Overmeyer and Hall. AMU is also looking at doing some water main improvements there before we, before we get in there with concrete work. So there is some work on the east end of Overmeyer at Hall Street. But we're going to get that done yet this year. We have other stuff to work on, so we're, we're working on the other stuff and letting AMU and the county get, get their activities done there.
All together.
Yep. There's a change order on the agenda too. I think, do you want to talk about that when that comes up? Or do you want to talk about that? Sure. At the intersection, oh, it's not the intersection, the curve on Overmeyer and Smith Street, we encountered a catch basin that is in, in a driveway. It's not in the curb line. It's back behind the curb inside a, in a driveway. And the casting was sunk down. The structure is twice as big as that casting is. The structure's like eight feet wide by four and a half feet wide. And the casting is four by two and a half. So there's a big box underneath the ground there that really doesn't need to be there. So in order to fix that and get it out of that private driveway, and it's in the driveway, but we're going to remove that catch basin, salvage the casting, and build a new catch basin in the curb line. So the water just runs down the street right into the gutter, into the, into the intake. It'll just make everything function better. We'll get some better drainage around that corner. I know it, it holds water a lot of times through the winter in the city. It has to, has ice problems and stuff there in curb sets, so. Yeah, that's going to be the change order that's coming up later on the agenda. But that's what it's for. Any other questions?
Thank you, man. Anything else, Jacob? Okay. We'll move into Agenda Item Number Seven. This is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with items that are not on today's agenda. I don't see anyone here in the council chambers. Is there anyone on the phone that would like to speak?
There's only one person on the phone and they're not indicating anything.
Okay, all right. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Eight. That's the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our last city council meeting on September the 7th. Approve the bills to be paid this cycle. Approve a Class E liquor license to SLJ Investments. Approve the department reports as well as the various, the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met, and approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Here we have a motion from Harley, a second from Jody. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Nine is the second reading of an ordinance concerning parking during a snow emergency.
This is ordinance, I would make two changes to the city's snow emergency ordinance. First would be the official means for, for when a snow emergency is declared. Change that to notification via the Alert Iowa Emergency Notification System. The big change is a second item in the ordinance is regarding parking in municipal lots. The ordinance adds language, providing for the city to provide, designate city parking lots as having a side A and a side B that would have parking schedules which would allow for more efficient and better clearing of snow. So those sides would be in effect from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM and then rotate. So wouldn't impact during business hours, but in the evening and over night, allowing or having people park on one side would make the snow operations a lot more efficient and safer. A second reading of the ordinance.
Motion to waive the second reading?
Second. We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don to waive the second reading. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve second reading. Is that right? Now the Don.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the second reading. Is there any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Ten is a resolution approving an economic development contract.
This is an amendment to an existing contract from 2016, which was between the city, Iowa Economic Development Authority, and COFAB. COFAB, recent, a division of Precision Inquum was recently sold. So this resolution, all it does is authorize and approve the amendment of the contract with change in the ownership of the economic development contract to reflect the change. It does not change the performance standards that the state had in there. The proposed owners have already signed the agreement and the Iowa Economic Development Authority has approved the amendment as well.
Move to approve. A motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Eleven is a resolution pertaining to a settlement agreement.
This is an agreement with New Way K&amp;H Cooperative, doing businesses on going to Classic Stop. The fine and settlement agreement for a failed tobacco check.
Motion to approve settlement agreement.
Second. We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Twelve is a resolution approving a revolving loan fund loan.
An application from AZ Broadcasting LLC, which is owned by Bernie Gary Darrell, to propose purchase of KLGA KLGZ radio station and all the associated property and equipment. The loan amount is for $15,000. The RLF, LLF committee met on September 16th, reviewed and voted to recommend approval. The other financing elements on this project have also been approved or have been approved. So the only outstanding piece is the city's $15,000 RLF.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just thanks, thanks to local individuals for, you know, committing to this community. Thank you.
Any comments on any changes you're going to do, or?
At this time, we do not anticipate any changes. Staff people stay the same for revenue remaining as is. In the future, we may look to look at more things and we'll see. But for now, we're going to stick with what we've got because it's a very workable model and we're just happy to bring it back under local ownership after 28 years of being owned by outside entities. Keep the money, Algona.
Thank you for bringing it home.
We wish you success on your investment. Okay, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Thirteen is a resolution involving the Iowa DOT.
This is a resolution approving a grant agreement with the DOT for up to 70% of eligible costs or up to $63,750. It is to replace the airport or the shop or the hangar at the airport shop, the byfold door on that building. It was identified for this year, the CIP. Are you anything to add?
No, they pay 75% and we pay 25% as well. And the door is in pretty good shape.
Yeah, that's a big door. It's a big door.
Motion to approve resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler. Any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Fourteen is a resi, oh, let's see. No, that one we're going, I'm sorry. We're going to, yes. So Agenda Item Number Fifteen then is to approve a pay app on North Main Street reconstruction project.
This is pay application number four for the North Main Street project. This pay application is in the amount of $274,831.56. The balance to finish, including retainage, is $157,811.44. As Matt mentioned, we hope this street will open up here later this month. And then we'll be just be looking at finishing up a few items on the pay apps, getting it seeded. It's likely that we'll keep the contract open through the, through the winter till the spring just to make sure of the seeding takes. But more or less that project will be wrapped up here by the end of this week. So this is pay application number four.
Now, just a question. In working on this street, the first thing they did was remove a lot of trees. Is the city going to put trees back in, or the homeowners, property owners put trees back in? What's the plan there?
Unfortunately, that street and all the utilities that had to be redone and moved, I think every street, every tree in the right way had to go. Our plan is with the new partnership with AMU to encourage planting on private property, to encourage owners to replant trees, but on their side of property. So it won't be in the right way while they interfere with our utilities. But through that rebate program, encourage owners to reline the street with trees, but, but on their side of the property line.
So that's for both sides of the street?
Yeah.
I plan on sending out a brochure to the tree program to everybody in, that was on the North Main Street project, so they're aware that they can get reemers for their trees.
Well, it's good to get some planted soon. I was out walking today. I walked past somewhere where I was used to looking through the trees and seeing something as like, wow, those trees have really grown a lot in the last few years. So, you know, well, they say the best time to plant a tree is last year or something like that, or 10 years ago. It's good if we can get some planted there right away.
Move to approve the payout.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Brad. Any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Sixteen is another payout.
This is pay application number two for the Moore Street Snap-on Drive and Keek Industrial Project. This pay application is the amount of $367,633.98. The balance to finish is $1,795,179.
Motion to approve payout application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this payout application. Is there any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Seventeen is also approving a payout.
This pay application is for the Millen overlay project. The amount on this pay application is for $189,851.7. The balance to finish is $486,698.6.
Second.
We have a motion from Tyler, a second from Brad. Any discussion?
This maybe isn't directly on this, but I noticed around town, there's a lot of streets have blacktop patches on them to level them up. Those are going to be chipped and sealed yet this year, or what's the plan with those? Or are they done?
Are you talking around, like on the, all around with this project?
I think I was on Lucas Street and saw over there, there's places where there's blacktop patches that are fresh and looked like it was just to level it up before chip and seal, I wondered. Or are we not doing any of that this year?
We don't have any chip and seal plans. We are, last week, I know they're still working on this week. They're doing asphalt patches on some areas where we had some issues over the winter, as well as just some other pot full filling.
Okay, so that's all it was.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don? Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Eighteen is a change order for the Millen overlay street improvement that Matt talked about.
So this change order is for $10,165. As Matt mentioned, it would be moving the current stormwater intake that's located within an actual driveway. On our plans, we didn't think we were going to have to impact this intake. But once we got out of the field, there's a wall that's failing that we'd have to rebuild it to secure. And since we're going to be putting time and money into this, it makes sense just to move it where it should be in the curb line. So that's why it wasn't in the design, but now that we realize that it needs an investment, let's fix it and move it. So that's the proposal.
I've had the homeowner contact me on that one before, and I think she'd be very happy to see something like that done because she's dealt with some ice there. And I know Kurt's worked with her on that, some buildup, especially in the winter and the snow. So if they can help that, I'm sure they'll be very appreciated. Very much appreciative, at least. So I'd make a motion for change order.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Nineteen is to approve a street closure for Algona High School Homecoming Parade.
Algona Homecoming Parade will be Friday, September 24th, starting at approximately 2:50. Algonah Homecoming Parade will be Friday, September 24th, starting at approximately 2:15. It will begin at Bertha Godfrey and go down South Main and then Gregor Street before turning down South Hale and ending at the school there. So it'll be some temporary closures there, but it should be relatively quick. But you mean the?
No.
It normally takes about a half hour.
Motion to approve the homecoming parade route for Algonah community.
Second. We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don. Any discussion? It's always a good parade.
Yes, it is. Fun to watch the kids.
Yeah. Vote, please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number Twenty is approve a street closure for Bishop Garrigan Homecoming Parade on the first of October.
This one isn't so much a closure, but more of an awareness, and there will be some kind of temporary makeshifts with the queuing up on, will actually be Harlem Street. This map shows more, but Bishop Garrigan, their homecoming, it will be Friday, October 1st, the parade. It would begin at 2:00. They would queue up here on Harlem Street and then just go down East State and end in front of the courthouse. Won't have to actually close down the state or park it or anything like that.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Jody. Any discussion? We'll get to enjoy that parade as well. Vote, please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Twenty-One is to approve a request to block off some parking spaces.
Brownish U. Fittas requested to block off some parking spaces in front of their business on State Street on Friday, October 1st, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They'll be hosting the scratch cupcake food truck. Matt there shows our proposed location for that, which would be on the north side of State, on the parking spots further west. They believe it'll need about two to possibly three spaces, but we're showing four just to provide a buffer around there. The request was from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. In my memo, I had suggested 10:30 to 1:30 PM, but after talking with Chief Miller, didn't know if it'd have any conflicts with the Garrigan Homecoming Parade. I changed my recommendation to it's fine to be from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That we don't think that should cause any issues.
I would think they'd complement each other quite nicely.
Well, I've never seen the cupcakes, however you say that, they don't last three hours usually.
I was gonna say, they'll be out by then.
They'll be out in two.
And Brownish is aware that the parade will be starting at two, so they'll likely leave slightly before or more slightly after. They won't hang around and pick up that crowd.
Yeah. Cool.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Jody, a second from Don. Any other discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Twenty-Two is to approve a street closure for Band Day.
Band Day is Saturday, October 2nd. This map shows typically what we've done in recent years in terms of street closures. Also, basically, we have the State Street from Phillips to Thornton, and then the side streets just to prevent people from coming down and getting caught there. Nebraska will remain open for the detours, so we shouldn't have an impact there with the Gregor Street closure.
That was good.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three is setting a trick-or-treat night for Halloween.
Halloween falls on Sunday, October 31st this year. In recent years past, the city, we've designated trick-or-treating from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. I think for some other events around town, we're gonna ask questions on when we have Halloween, so it is fast approaching. But so that's where we have it on here, yeah, September. So the recommendation would be to have trick-or-treating on Sunday, October 31st, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Rodney. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll have trick-or-treat night on the 31st of October. I usually have a couple of hundred kids knocking on my door that night, so always enjoy that. So Agenda Item Twenty-Four, this is just a notification, the first notification of future vacancy and appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as Tony Ram will be moving outside of the city limits, so he's ineligible then to serve. And his appointment will need to fill for the remainder of his term, which expires the first of January of 2024. Agenda Item Twenty-Five is a notification of vacancy and a future appointment to the Airport Commission to fill the remainder of Pete Riggs' term, which expires the 23rd of August of 2025. Agenda Item Twenty-Six, this is the second notification of terms expiring and a future appointment to the Retail Revolving Loan Fund Committee. The terms of Levi and Brad Hoover expired September the 16th, 2021. So this is a future appointment notification also. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Seven, this is the second notification of vacancy and a future appointment to the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. This is to fill the remainder of Nick Arnt's term, which expires the first of August, 2024. And the final Agenda Item Number Twenty-Eight, this is an appointment this evening to the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment to serve the remainder of Nick Dear's term.
Believe we had a gentleman interested calling, Joe Hartman. I guess I would, with his interest, I would make a motion to appoint Joe Hartman to the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustments.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, and thank you, Joe, for agreeing to serve on that very active board. So this comes to the end of our published agenda. It is 5:38, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Here a second?